This evening. This afternoon for the June 18th, 2021, Montesereno Special City Council meeting. Before this meeting is called to order, I would like to clarify a few house rules to assist council members, staff, and members of the public to successfully participate in this meeting. Council members, your microphone is live, so please keep your microphones on mute until you wish to speak. For this afternoon's meeting, we are using Zoom to host the city council special meeting. At the bottom of this Zoom client, there are two microphones, chat and raise hand. Please use chat only to report technical issues such as being unable to hear council members speaking. Please use raise hand to be recognized by the mayor and be able to speak to the council. To comment under oral communication or any agenda item, you are allowed three minutes to speak per agenda item. Emails limited to three hundred words can also be submitted to the city clerk and it will be read into the record. This word limit is set to heal to the typical three-minute time limits. Only attendees using Zoom application can use the raise hand option to comment. Participants calling in from a telephone will only be able to listen and cannot provide feedback for oral public comment. Lastly, because we are all not in the same room, all votes of this meeting will be taken by a laptop.
Thank you. The special meeting of the City Council of Montesereno for Friday, June 18th at 3:30 PM is called to order. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Lawler.
Present.
Councilmember Megachuck.
Present.
Councilmember Turner.
Here.
Mayor Proteny Wahi.
Present.
And Mayor Nukle.
Present.
Yeah, of course.
Thank you. Okay, since there's only one matter on, I assume there are no changes to the orders of the day. And I will check, but I believe we have no members of the public and the city attorney has advised that it is apparently not necessary to call for public comment, but seeing no members of the public present, we will pass public comment unless someone shows up and requests to be heard and move to new business, which is discussion and decision on potentially appealing Montesereno's regional housing needs allocation numbers and providing direction to staff. So do we have a staff report or are we going to go directly to Ms. Turner's presentation about what she knows about this subject matter? Mr. Leonardi, are we going to do a staff presentation or just go straight to Ms. Turner's presentation?
This is Dave Keith, and I believe Steve is trying to dial in from his phone. I can hear him down the hall.
All right, we'll give him a moment. Thank you for speaking up. I was wondering.
And we could take public comment on this agenda item while we're waiting.
All right, yeah, so let's go ahead and open this for public comment. If there are any members of the public wishing to be heard, please raise your hand to be recognized. Seeing none, we will close public comment and return to the staff report as Mr. Leonardi, when Mr. Leonardi is able to dial in here. And meanwhile, I assume Ms. Radcliffe, we will at some point be queuing up Ms. Turner's presentation, so if you'll have that on standby for us.
Will do. Thank you.
Mayor Luthold, why don't we just get going with the council member Turner's presentation?
Yeah, thank you. Let's go ahead and do that and then we can come back to Mr. Leonardi for any comments or additions he has after we get through with this. So yes, Ms. Turner, would you like to tell us why we're here today?
Yeah, Ms. Radcliffe, is it possible? Oh, there it is. Is that you or is that me trying to share? Not sure.
It's actually Dave had to do in the presentation.
Okay, can we make that bigger? Is that possible? If not, I can try to share my screen.
That looks great to me.
Yeah, we've got it at full screen now.
Oh, you do?
Yep. I think it's as big as it can get and we can see it well.
Okay. So let's, what I wanted to do was, I wanted to present this. It's only going to take about 10 minutes, right? But let's look at the first slide. The first slide actually shows you the Montesereno allocation. It shows us that for HCD, for the Bay Area, we have 441,000 units. And then the county, we have about 130,000 units. Now, if you look at Montesereno's allocation for the fifth cycle, you will see it down below in orange. And at the top, we have our sixth Reno cycle. Now initially, we had 191, some of the the cities around us petitioned for a reduction. Los Altos, Cupertino, Palo Alto got a reduction. I don't think Los Gatos asked for one, so a lot of the numbers from those cities went to Los Gatos, so their numbers went up. And fortunately for us, it went up by one. So if you look at the allocation, our allocation have really jumped in the very low income and the low income. And most of the cities in Southern California and Northern California are having a difficult time trying to build homes in the very low income and the low income category. Okay, so let's go to the next slide. Okay, in January of 21, 2021, these were the cities that actually went to the HCD meeting that I attended and they protested the Reno numbers. It is not clear whether the same cities will actually appeal their numbers at this time. I attended a meeting last week where HCD spoke and she said that they have received appeals from the Northern California cities. I don't know who they are. I've been still trying to find out and I haven't been able to. But I do know that the city of Los Altos is working on an appeal, the city of Palo Alto, Saratoga, Pleasanton, and some other cities. I don't think Cupertino is, and that's a different story. So let me go on to the next one. Okay, this is our our schedule here. So the final methodology and draft allocation was approved May the 25th, right? So they're opening up the appeals process until July 9th at 5 o'clock, so we have until then to do that. In September, they're going to have a public hearing. And this will be a presentation by either the city manager or the consultant if we decide to do one. And then the Reno allocation will be distributed in November and it'll start January of 2023. So let me go to the next one, please. So what happens? What happens to, if there are cities who file an appeal and HCD says, yes, we will lower your appeal, the overall numbers will not go down. The numbers will be distributed to the other cities. Okay, so we will still have that 441,000 that we have to deal with. My fear is that if we don't appeal, then HCD may assume that we're happy with our 192 number and give us the allocations that other cities have rejected. So let's go to the next slide, please. Okay, what I have here is I created on the fly the basis for our appeal. Now, I'm not a subject matter expert here, so that's why I am requesting and I talked to our mayor Luthold about this because we're both buddies on this one. At least I'm requesting that we hire a consultant to go over each one of this to say, yes, we will include this in our appeal. Now, I can already tell you that at the last meeting, HCD says we're not going to consider an appeal for cities in a fire, high fire area. That is not the basis of an appeal that they will even consider. Now, whether we should put that in there or not, that's for us to determine or maybe even the consultant to determine whether we should include that or not. So what I wanted you guys to do is to look over this. Allison Ziegler, Site and Architecture, sent us a email yesterday and I included it in my notes here that we should include the fire and safety access for fire department and fire department in this list. So with that, basically, this is what I have for this afternoon. I don't have the the estimate for a consultant. I think that belongs to our city manager.
All right, thank you. Mr. Megachuck has a hand up. Go ahead.
Thank you. I sent some slides to Ms. Radcliffe. Did you receive those and can you put those onto the screen or can you get them over to Dave? You put them on the screen?
Yeah, I can get that. Give me one second.
Before, as she's doing that, Ms. Turner, how did you get your 192 number? Like I have a different number.
That's from HCD.
Okay, I'll just walk you through some of the information that I found. This is out of the, with water on my agenda. This shows the Reno numbers and our projected water use from valley water. So you can see how that ABAG projected population numbers are increasing dramatically. And then how we're not going to have the water use or the water availability. Next slide, please. Or next page. So here's the numbers that I found and mine are 193. This was off the website today, so I'm not sure if there's been some moving around already or not. Ms. Turner. Are these the numbers that you were looking at? Yours was 192. I just, not that it's a big deal, but I think we should all be on the same page.
I, to be honest with you, I can't read it. It's too small on my screen. So we'll have to do that the next time. We can do it offline, okay?
But look at, look at the big picture here. We are 193 units. We are the least amount. Sorry, those numbers shouldn't be there at the bottom, but look at the other numbers. Like we get lost in the rounding after one decimal point. I mean, we're nothing. We are a postage stamp. If someone wanted to, for lack of a better term, go after us, what are they going to get? They're going to get nothing. We have nothing. We're a postage stamp. Can you scroll down, please, Ms. Radcliffe? This is the same thing, but San Mateo County. And if you look there, I was trying to figure out who our peer group would be, and I think it would be Atherton, Hillsborough. I thought Portola Valley for a little bit, but then decided not. And I think I included Woodside, but maybe not. But you can see, you know, their numbers. They, these cities have, they're in a smaller group. So I think they'll have a tougher time and I think the reallocation will not cross jurisdictions. Could you scroll down, please, Ms. Radcliffe? And then here, I just extracted the numbers. Oh, I did include Woodside. And I ranked them from high to low and then I said, what are the percentages? So you can see, all they're doing is, in terms of very low, low, moderate, and above moderate, all they're doing is applying the same percentage. Right? There's no magic within those groups. It's just if it's the same. But when you look at the numbers, we're 193. Like I'm not sure if they were to reallocate numbers, I think they would do it prorata based on the numbers that you already have. So you know, if something goes, if Los Gatos was to go down by 23 units, they would take that 23 units and then allocate it based on your percentage. So and look at Los Gatos and look at Montesereno. Los Gatos, 537, Montesereno, 53. Los Gatos, 310, Montesereno, 30. Moderate, 320 for Los Gatos, 31. 826, 79. I mean, it's just, you know, we're a tenth the size of Los Gatos. I really don't think that we've got a lot to either lose or gain. We're not going to move the needle that far on 193, regardless of how much effort we put into it. I think that, you know, and whatever number we get, you know, it gets lost in the rounding of all the other cities in Santa Clara County. So, you know, and I had asked for numbers to come prepared to this meeting with some numbers, estimates, something on what this is going to cost and what the benefit's going to be. And I'm really, you know, I'm going to be very disappointed if we don't have those numbers.
All right, thank you. Thank you for your comment, Mr. Megachuck. And just so people know, I am on a iPad today, so I won't necessarily see everybody. So if I'm not calling on somebody and you think I'm ignoring you, make sure you actually speak up. Actually, if we don't have a presentation on, I may be able to see everybody on gallery view. Okay. So that'll work unless we're in a presentation, but speak up if I'm not calling on somebody. Do we have anybody else who would like to speak to any of these points immediately? Or we can potentially start asking some questions and I have some comments as well. Ms. Turner?
Yes, I just wanted to say that I think one of the things we need, by the way, in terms of getting numbers, I don't think that's my purview. That belongs to the city manager to actually go out to the consultant to ask, to ask for how much it's going to cost and all of that. I don't think that's part of the ad hoc committee's task to do. The second one is, I think what you need to do is to go to the SCAG site and see the allocations that happened at the end after the hearing. And that will actually tell you how HCD has moved it around. Not based on the first hearing, but actually the final hearing.
All right, thank you for those points. And I would just point out, I completely understand Mr. Megachuck's thinking on this, that we're a small fish. And yet, at the same time, just being so small, we have already received an allocation that's going to be very, very challenging, if not impossible, with 192 or 193 units. And I just did some math while we were sitting here, looking purely at Santa Clara County. We are at about 0.148% allocation, which is agreeably quite small. However, if you take that 0.148 to 0.2%, we would go up to 260 units. So something that also is an irrelevancy to the people who are playing with these trading cards would saddle us with another 67 units and take us up as a large percentage relative to the number that we are already at. It's already going to be maybe an impossible challenge for us. So that's one of the reasons why we're here today is really as representatives of our community to say, now, what would our community want us to do? I think we've heard pretty resoundingly, they want no change in Montesereno, if at all possible, keep the door slammed shut. Not in my backyard. There's plenty of that. We have a few people who believe we should do our fair share of housing. Certainly, that is relatively speaking, a minority. But we can always do more housing. We're talking about what the minimum to zone without getting in trouble for a city that likes to follow the rules is. So certainly, when Ms. Turner brought this to me and said, one, there's a deadline. We need to pay attention and not simply miss it. We need to have this discussion. That's one of the reasons we're here today. One of the other reasons that we're here today is to take a look at this because I also agree with Ms. Turner that failure to speak up is pretty much going to ensure that we are going to receive some additional allocation of units when somebody is somewhat successful. And it is simply, if no one has appealed, those will be spread amongst the people who didn't appeal. And that was Ms. Turner's concern, that it's only an upward movement. It's not a stay the same or go down situation. So the question then comes to what Mr. Megachuck brought up, which is, this is absolutely something where the cost is important. One can easily look at Palos Verdes and 90 pages of appeal and say, somebody charged them a whole lot of money for that, even though most of it is cut and paste boilerplate off of their prior housing element or their current housing element. The actual number of pages where you actually have to answer questions is not that overwhelming to my eye. And then it's a bunch of fluff. And so certainly, we could look to, and Mr. Leonardi may or may not have some information. Our city attorney may or may not have some information about what others are either seeing or what we might project for this. And we can go out and get costs and see about quick turnaround. But if nothing else, it seems possible that we could put together a quick and dirty, cut and paste, so that we are among the people who are complaining as opposed to the people who make no complaint and get a reallocation of units. In fact, I know I want to be sensitive about staff time and I don't know that we have staff time to do this. And I'm not exactly volunteering my time just because I'm not a subject matter expert. But I certainly see the benefit of quick and dirty, if nothing else, professional, if we can do that at a reasonable price. So those are my thoughts as we look at this. If other council members have some thoughts right now, we can go to other people. Otherwise, maybe we should see if if Sergio or Steve have any thoughts or information for us about either actual numbers or ideas about how we could quickly get the numbers and see what the turnaround time would be to meet the deadlines. So council members for...
Thank you, Mayor. I finally have joined the call with an actual microphone. My apologies for the difficulties earlier. I was just speaking with city planner Jean Hamilton earlier and we have a consultant that we have already commissioned for some of our other projects who could probably step in and craft a protest letter for us. So I'll turn it over to Jeannie and see if she has more insight on that for us at this time. Jeannie, are you on our call? Still?
I think she's here. We may have to, yeah. We can recognize her.
Yeah, we, as you're all aware, you've approved a contract with the MC planning group. I had a kickoff meeting with them yesterday and I did bring up the possibility of the council entertaining an appeal of Reno numbers and asked them if that was something that they could possibly do for us. I did not go so far as to get a quote or anything from them, but I'm sure they could put some together quickly to let you all understand what it might cost. They are very aware of the deadlines also. But they've already done some research into our previous housing elements, so you know, my thought is keep it with those consultants and you're going to have your best opportunity to get something turned around quickly.
All right, and you know, additionally, I did look into and provide recommendations to a city manager on other potential consultants. It is typically cheaper for the city to use a consultant that's going to be already familiar with the city's housing elements. So for example, for Sausalito, they hired a consultant to prepare their new housing elements at a contract cost of around, you know, $800,000. And in that, there is a line item for about $6,500 for providing technical assistance with Sausalito's Reno appeal, including preparation of the appeal. So if your consultant is very familiar with your housing element, you know, that can be a very low cost. But if they're not familiar, I would anticipate that there's probably some cost for getting that consultant up to speed. Additionally, you know, if the work is going to be less than $15,000 in scope, that is something that the council can simply direct the city manager to go out and procure and he can execute under his own signature authority without requiring any additional approval from council other than that direction. But if the work, either from the existing consultants or from some other outside consultant is going to be in excess of $15,000, that is something unfortunately the council is going to have to approve.
Good, thank you. That's good information. And again, my thought on this was that with this added information and with it clear that what we're looking for, perhaps, again, that we've got to have a quorum, at least in agreement on this, that some sort of an appeal, even if it's a little bit quick and dirty, Ms. Turner already threw out several bases. Mr. Megachuck, you added one for water, which is a good appeal basis, even though you didn't seem excited about appealing. Those all look like things that we can brainstorm into the appeal to help out someone who's coming at it from more of technical skill rather than local knowledge. All right, I saw Brian's hand, but let's go to Liz first. Okay.
Thank you. So really quickly, Southern California had 60 cities appeal this cycle, which is the most they've ever had. So obviously, there's momentum for us to do this, but I did hear that apparently courts don't like the water argument. Mr. Rudin, have you heard anything in that regard?
No, I have not. ABAG, as one of the attachments to the staff report, there is ABAG's guidance on their interpretation of what the statutory bases are that authorize an appeal. And one of the things that they mention is that a potential ground for appeal is the availability of land suitable for urban development or conversion to residential use. And they discuss, you know, exclusion of lands that are, you know, flood, like flood management, at risk of flooding, things along those lines. I'm not, you know, lack of capacity for sewer and water service due to federal or state laws, regulations, or regulatory actions is actually listed as one of those that they will consider. So I do think that it is, it's a statutory ground, so I've not heard that issue raised before. And it seems like something that ABAG has admitted that they will consider as a basis.
Okay, so maybe that was just unique to Southern California then. All right, let's see. I think that's it for now. I have other comments for, well, I guess what I could one say in support of doing something like this is that according to the statistics, in order to accomplish 441,000 housing units, we would have to build 55,000 a year, which is virtually impossible. So obviously, doing something like this and the fact that we have so much momentum with other cities would be important. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Mr. Megachuck.
Thank you for talking about the quick and dirty and I would have no problem doing a quick and dirty on this. So that we just raise our, so we object, but to spend more than 15,000... But to spend more than fifteen thousand dollars, I, I'm not sure that that's in the best interest of Monte Sereno. The other thing is, is that I think that, that the more profile we raise and the more, the louder we become, the more the spotlight will be shone on us and that we could be taken to task and, and highlighted in, and make an example of. So, you know, I'd prefer to fly a little lower on the radar screen. But to put some sort of a, a appeal in place, I think, would be a good thing. But I'm, I'm all for the do it yourself and I'll contribute some of my time to do that.
Great, thank you. Yeah, and, and I, I'm agreeing with what I'm hearing from you on that, with this, this idea of keeping the budget down, but making sure we're part of the people who are complaining. And, and I also like your thought about not putting our head up because that tends to, the nail that sticks up tends to attract the hammer. And certainly with the YMB groups, with our profile as a well-off neighborhood, we don't want a reputation for not doing our part. And I think the point really being that we don't want to, we want to join the, don't increase our numbers group as opposed to we're telling you our numbers of a hundred and ninety-three are unfair and unacceptable. What we're really saying is, don't go increasing our numbers. And, and if there's reason to make them smaller, maybe that makes sense without, without being obnoxious about it. The other thing I, I, I point out to people, at least from my own view of Monte Sereno, is we're a bunch of rule followers. Last time, we actually are one of very few cities in the state who made our numbers in this housing cycle. And if somebody gives us a number in the next cycle, chances are we're going to work really hard to do what we're supposed to do, whereas most cities just blow it off. So we want that number to be as small as possible, from my point of view. Liz.
To, to your point then, would it be more efficient for us to, in lieu of an appeal, file an amicus brief against the YMB lawsuit to protect our numbers? Or would it be better to just file an appeal?
From, from what I understand, and maybe Sergio can, can explain a little more clearly, I think those are two completely separate things. The appeal is when they're allocating numbers and that simply is going to be handled by HCD as opposed to the court issue, which was about, if I'm understanding it correctly, the overall issue. And we can talk about that. Ms. Turner's got her hand up.
I was under the impression that it would protect our numbers from going up.
To, to Liz's question. Because I attended the SCAGs appeal. So, so this is what happens. I, I, I showed you when they're going to start a public hearing. So it's not the court that's going to hear this, it's HCD. So what's going to happen, it's going to be like a, it is a public hearing where all the, all the appeals, and also we will include our comment letter that we did in January along with that. The city manager or the consultant will get up there. And I think they're, they're given fifteen minutes each. So you're not going to be given more time. You can't shout any louder other than fifteen minutes and that's it. Then they make their determination. They give it to us in, in November and our number, and we will begin to execute on the twenty-third. Okay, so now let me talk about something quick and dirty. I had a conversation with the city, the council members of the city of Los Altos and the city of Palo Alto to share with us their templates because they're doing their appeal. However, they said yes, they would share it with us, but they have to give the document to their council first for approval before they share it with any other city. Now, I'm a bit hesitant to depend on that entirely because if they share with us their template and they, they, we get, you know, the benefit of lower numbers and they don't, then it's a disadvantage for them right away. And I do understand if, if they change their mind and say, you know, we decided not to share it with you, and that's okay too. But I didn't want the city to be open to that. So that's why I talked to Mayor Luthold about doing an appeal.
And if I can go back and, you know, provide an answer to Liz's question. In general, the Rena process starts with a determination of the number for the region, which ABAG develops in consultation with HCD and HCD approves. The YMB lawsuit challenges the way that HCD and ABAG came up with the number for the region, meaning that if YMB is successful, the number for the region goes up. The Rena appeal process that the city is considering is filing an appeal with ABAG over the allocation of the regional number, meaning, you know, how that big number that is determined at the beginning of the process is split up between the jurisdictions. And there are limited statutory bases where you're allowed to challenge the number that your specific city gets. And if you're successful, basically that number gets redistributed amongst the, the cities and jurisdictions in the region until that big regional number is met. With the YMB lawsuit, basically YMB is seeking a greater regional number, which could potentially result in the whole Rena allocation process having to be redone with higher allocations to each of the jurisdictions if YMB is successful.
Right, well, thank you. Thank you for that. Yes, no, I, I did understand the difference. I understand the difference between the appeal. But what I'm, what I'm asking is, would we consider doing both? Because we're covering all of our bases, right? In the event that HCD settles, for whatever reason, then our numbers are going to go up. And we need to put a mechanism in place that we can protect ourselves from that happening? That's kind of what I'm thinking is it's in conjunction with, even though they're two separate acts. Does that make sense?
Yes, and my, you know, the city certainly can participate in either a group effort or individually attempt to seek leave of the court to get permission to file an amicus brief. It's, it's not something that you could immediately do as a right. And actually, there has been one attempt at filing an amicus brief in that YMB action by, I think, a concerned citizen, which is being presently opposed. And filing an amicus brief doesn't actually make the city a party to the case. It just provides the court with additional information about the city's position, its understanding of the law and the issues. But it wouldn't limit the ability of HCD to settle or into, enter into some sort of stipulated judgment with YMB. So, you know, it, it would be valuable if the city would like to participate and convey its position on the YMB lawsuit to the court. My, I, I've read HCD's answer, and it looks like they are defending on the merits. But obviously, there's no guarantee that they won't try to work out some sort of compromise. But filing an amicus brief wouldn't necessarily limit their ability to do that.
All right, thanks.
Yeah, back to Ms. Turner.
Yes, I have a question for, for Sergio now. And I don't know, can, is it, are we allowed to talk about the, the lawsuit from YMB in this meeting?
It has been added to the agenda materials and it does directly relate to the Rena allocation.
Okay, good, because I have, I have some information, I think, that you guys would be interested in. So I have been working with the, the Cali group on the, the amicus brief. So I, they gave me like, you know, half an hour before this meeting, a draft of the amicus brief that a lawyer on his, his own time crafted. And I want to send it to, to you and Sean Luthold because he is my, my buddy on this as well. And then you can, you can give your opinion later on. Would that, would that be a good plan?
Yeah, certainly. And, you know, the, the trial in this matter is set for September third. My, my thought process on this is it would be good for the council to vote to approve the filing of an amicus brief on behalf of the city. That is something that, you know, after review of the documents, Councilmember Turner is intending to provide, could be put on the agenda for the first meeting in August.
Okay, and, and by the way, just to let you know, some of the cities have volunteered to pay for some of the cost if we do incur costs with this amicus brief. And so that, that will come up in our meetings as well. I meet with them every Sunday at four o'clock.
And that, I, that I definitely, in terms of incurring additional costs, the city would recommend be agendized and approved by the council.
Okay.
Let's move on to Mekachuk.
I, I had a couple of comments. I guess you don't see me.
No, I didn't see the raised hand there. Yeah, why don't, why don't you jump in, David?
Yeah, I just, I, I, I think this is an important meeting and I appreciate all the work that's been done to bring this on the agenda. And I understand Mr. Mekachuk's point of view also because this is a budgeted item and there will be a lot of appeals filed on this case. So one item that could probably be easily put into any appeal that we file with the HCD people has to do with whether the counting is correct or not. And that's part of the appeal that the Rancho Vista people have filed. So that could just probably be cut and paste and put into our brief. The other item that Mr. Councilmember Turner was pointing out is whether fire can be added or not. And that's a critical one. I think one of the items that they say they will consider are changed circumstances. And I think the fire safe hazard has become, it's much bigger now than it used to be when this first was processed. So we need to get somebody to help us with the fire stuff. The other items, I think, to keep the cost down, we may not really need to get too much into the, a lot of those other items. The water one is a good one that Councilmember Mekachuk brought up. So I think if you do a focused appeal, you can probably keep it under fifteen thousand dollars. Now, the appeal parameters are fairly specific. There's a lot of legal grounds and that must be met. And I don't know if our consultant, the level of legal knowledge that they have on these appeal processes, I assume they do. I mean, if they're doing ABAG, the housing element studies, they probably take into account, but, but they're really limited what the grounds can be on these appeal because they don't want, I mean, obviously they don't want to deny them as much as possible. And also this, this appeal cannot be appealed to the court. So once these guys decide that it's supposed to be a final processing on it. So there, so there may be some legal help that the consultant also needs just to make sure the appeal is, you know, tightly packaged and moves forward with the grounds that are specific to us. Now, what other element had to do with us being able to satisfy the very low or low income, maybe not very low, but at least the low income requirements through the use of our ADUs. And this doesn't really clarify whether ADUs can be used or not. And at some, some point, the, the thought was ADUs cannot be considered. So we want to make sure ADUs are considered.
Yes.
And.
They are, they are considered as available sources, available site in the site inventory for the purposes of the housing element.
It is now in there? I, I, I went to this and I guess I didn't say anything on it. But so that's, that's good to know. So that, I mean, that we want to make sure. And I don't know how many, I assume there's going to be a lot of ADUs built up. So hopefully they'll help us satisfy some of the requirements. But a focused appeal, keep it a budget under fifteen thousand. That should include some funds for council if they need to make sure that the appeal meets the parameters. I'm sure they're going to send it to you, to, 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 to Rude and to review before it's actually filed. So, because it is a fairly technical, straight jacket that they're putting everybody into. Those are my comments.
Okay, thank you. And back to Mr. Mekachuk. He had his hand up first there. Go ahead.
I'll defer to Councilmember Lawler first.
All right, we go back to.
Thank you. I actually, I actually raised my little zoom hand. Thank you. Councilmember Mekachuk, I was being so. Back to your point about quick and dirty. I did want to bring up something about transportation. I looked at the Solana Beach appeals letter for Sandag. And Solana Beach is the smallest jurisdiction, San Diego, San Diego County, with three point four square miles, thirteen thousand population, limited vacant sites. And the interesting thing about transit is this. If anyone has taken the San Diegan Amtrak from downtown LA to San Diego, they know that Solana Beach is one of the stops. And their argument is, is that even though they have transportation, those people aren't stopping in Solana Beach. They are going to and from LA and San Diego. So I'm wondering if, if we can look at our VTA numbers and the ridership here in Montessorino, how many Montessorinians are actually using it? And are the people coming to and from jobs in Los Gatos or Campbell? So I'm wondering if that is something that we could potentially apply to our argument. It might be worth looking at the letter and seeing if you legal minds can, can find a likely argument there. Thanks.
Thank you. That's a good point, Ms. Lawler. The VTA does have some resources that we might be able to help, again, feed into our consultant or whoever is ultimately doing this about where, where rides begin and terminate. I don't know if they've got the granularity to actually show Monte Sereno because we're so small that we might not show up on that. But I recall with the Route, the Route eighty-five corridor, they had information about starting and ending points. So that's a really good point. I saw Ms. Turner's slide had a comment about the commute time or average commute times from Monte Sereno to jobs. And, and jobs are certainly one of the things that I believe was on the list of bases for appeal. And when we say we don't have the jobs, we're a bedroom community and maybe even kind of beyond the traditional definition of bedroom community. It's not like putting houses here puts them near jobs. So transit, transportation are excellent points. And again, these are things that I think our, as council members, expertise from our JPAs and our various roles, this is stuff we can feed into the, whoever's writing this to actually give it some content. Whereas the quick and dirty is a bunch of cut and paste. We can be the ones who provide the content to them that might actually provide some, some real content. And again, I mean, my view on this, and, and I'm just one of us here talking, is that we want to be among the people who are complaining. A successful appeal would actually perhaps lower our numbers. And, and I guess I, I was never as hopeful as thinking that we might lower our numbers by our appeal. It was that we're among the people complaining, so someone doesn't go and raise our numbers. But, so to Councilmember Mekachuk.
Thank you. If Ms. Radcliffe could put up a new Excel spreadsheet, please. Just as background, I got these numbers, and if you can make it a little bigger, please. I got these numbers from John Newby at the West Valley Sanitation District. And some of them came out of their annual report. So he's dealing with sewage connections. So you hear, you can see the single family dwelling units and how many connections. Now, this isn't for the entire city of Campbell, et cetera. It's only for the geographic area that they serve. But you can kind of see some of these numbers. If you could scroll down a bit, please, Ms. Radcliffe. And then you see that they put in accessory dwelling units. So you can see our line item in there. Scroll down a little bit. I was surprised at the industrial commercial complexes. And that has to do with, the school has several meters. The city of Monte Sereno has some. Anyways, keep scrolling down, please. Then it's got our population that's served. Now, and then I added up the residential connections. And then I divided by the population served. And you get, a little bit more, please. You get the people per connection. This is, I think, goes in our favor because look at the city of Monte Sereno. We have more people per connection than the others because more people live in each dwelling unit, which is, which is kind of interesting. You know, it's, it's somewhat counterintuitive. But also, when you think about it, you think, okay, well, in Monte Sereno, we don't have a lot of single, single unit apartments or whatever, where only one person could live. But I think that this bottom piece tells a nice story for what we could put forward. You know, we, we're not, anyways, I just thought that was interesting data that you may want to consider at some point.
Good, and again, your expertise and each person bringing this expertise is very, very helpful. Again, to provide real base. Again, to provide real bases to support an appeal with our local, local knowledge. As soon as Hamilton has her hand up, I'm not sure if that's a legacy of before or on this Hamilton. There it goes.
Sorry.
No worries. I just wanted to see if you did want to jump in at this point. Okay, Ms. Turner.
Yes, I just wanted to say one more thing. Governor Newsom has actually budgeted. For a few million dollars for HCD. Representatives to come to our meetings. Right? So they're going to be monitoring how we're doing, starting. Probably in December. To see how we're doing. Are we moving? Are we cooperating with the government? So I just wanted everyone to know that it's 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 in their budget. So we will expect guests probably at every, every meeting.
Interesting. Councilmember Lawler.
Yeah, one more, one more thing. If we can't meet our numbers, we're going to get fined, right? And how are those fines going to be collected from our property taxes, correct? So can we possibly anticipate or what kind of number that would look like for us?
So jumping in and maybe Mr. Rudden or someone else has more state of the art information. My understanding was. I hadn't heard about specific fines or monetary things yet. The sanctions that I've been hearing about were getting hit with more units in the future if you're not meeting in the past. So that's what I had heard so far. And and obviously, that actually is good for us because we've been meeting. And again, we're very likely to do our very best to meet and do a lot better than other people. Has anyone heard anything different?
So I can answer that question a little bit. I don't know the specific monetary penalties off of the top of my head, but basically. The way that you meet the Rena requirements is by ensuring that you have in the city zoned enough adequate sites. That are capable of being developed to the numbers that you're required to develop. And if your housing element doesn't comply with that requirement. The statute does allow the attorney general to take you to court and get a court order saying change your housing element to make it comply. And then if you willfully refuse to comply with that court order, at that point, the court has the ability to issue fines until you reach compliance. And I think it might be. Let me see if I can find it in the statute. I think it might be $10,000 per month.
And that's until we comply?
Yes.
That's until the housing element creates enough zoning.
Yes, it's there's there's no actual requirement in Rena law that the. That that they actually be built. The requirement is that you zone and make it possible to build their required housing.
All right. Thank you, Sergio.
I have a question for Sergio.
Go ahead.
I'm thinking out of the box here, you know, in our fifth Rena cycle. We have built more units than was allocated to us. Is it possible for us to take the extra units and move them to the sixth cycle?
Unfortunately, I suspect the answer, I'm pretty sure the answer to that is no. You know, it's similar, it's similar to the same reason why you can't appeal on the basis that you have a stable population. You know, the the numbers are regional and I think A bag wants to see additional housing created. Notwithstanding, you know, that you're in compliance with your previous housing element goals. Montessorino is actually, I think, in the same boat with with respect to this issue as another jurisdiction I advise, and they're a little disappointed by this. So.
Are you sure we can't do it?
I you can raise it in your appeal, but I don't know how much weight it will receive.
If I could comment, I don't know, Sean, if you're seeing my hand.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I think it's an interesting argument. It might fit into the change circumstances argument because when they came up with that allocation, they were probably using us. Based on the numbers they had and then consider the piece in units you already have. So I think it may be something that can possibly be inserted based on that.
Yes, Mr. Mekachuk.
So Ms. Turner, you implied that someone's going to. Come and attend our council meetings, you know, if if it wasn't a budget, but it was. It was an unconstrained resource. Yes, they would. But you know, if it was me and I was looking at the list and I'm thinking to myself, okay, I got X million dollars to attend X meetings. Which ones am I going to go to? I would never go to the city of Monte Sereno because I would have zero rate of return, even if I could triple the numbers. The 192 or three going to 600 or 1,000, I would still get zero return on my, you know, trivial return on my investment. So I don't think that we need to worry about that.
I'm not worried about it. I just brought it up because it's a line item in Governor Newsom's budget. That's all.
Let's make sure we make so much noise and we are so, this came so loudly and we're so wild and proposing this appeal that they feel that they have to come join us.
Exactly. And that's, and that comes back to Mr. Mekachuk's point about keeping our head down. And that's an important one because, I mean, the YMB people were more than happy to target us. Even though the discussion was about a mansion, not about low cost housing. Because they they would like to take on someone who's small, who might not fight them with the same budgets. Or who might create a precedent that that would have a much more broad reaching effect. So. We definitely, we want to keep our head down. At the same time, we we take action as opposed to being so passive that people are upset with us for not opposing our numbers. Which, again, I think, I think at least a plurality, if not a vast majority of our citizens certainly want us to. To do what is reasonable and cost effective to oppose increases in the numbers.
And I think that's what happened in the fifth Rena cycle where we didn't appeal. A lot of the citizens were so upset that we didn't appeal.
Yeah. So so I think, I mean, if if we've got other things that people want to talk about, that's fine, but it sounds like we we've got a consensus coming out of the meeting today. To have Ms. Hamilton and Mr. Leonardi's talk to these folks. See, I got their name down EMC planning about the concept of a somewhat pro forma on their part. And hopefully meaningfully under $15,000. Budget for this so that Mr. Leonardi's can handle it entirely and just being coming back to us for guidance. But that they would, we would also go to them with the idea that we have a lot of expertise. In terms of we can feed them, we don't need them doing the research about the city of Monte Sereno. We can tell them about our city. And our ideas about sewer and water and wildfire and evacuation and schools and. And all of these things that are important and 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 maybe do need to go in, even if HCD says you can't use these as an appeal. That that is a change of circumstances. HCD doesn't want to see everybody boilerplate. There's fire danger in California. But when we're talking about evacuation routes out of the fire zone that almost came over the hill last year. And and we have very, very strict limitations. And and safety around here, then maybe it is unique and maybe it does deserve to be brought up again. So. So it looks like we've got that consensus to have Ms. Hamilton, Mr. Leonardi's go to EMC. Get a budget, hopefully meaningfully below $15,000. I think we have a tentatively scheduled special meeting for late in June. And that we probably should lock down and keep on for coming back to us for either progress report. Or tell us why it's over $15,000 and get us to make a decision. And so we could keep that one on. We are going to be within, I think that was June 29th or so. That's going to put us within eight or nine days of the deadline. So that's going to be a tight timeline. If we needed to do it earlier, we might want to lock something down earlier. Again, if Mr. Leonardi's and Ms. Hamilton know, otherwise this can be done on 24 hours notice to call the special meeting. So we can always come in earlier. And I wanted one more point here while I've got the floor. I think we might be able to, either at the tentatively scheduled special meeting for the 29th or some other meeting. Again, include the amicus brief as an item for discussion. And come back with a progress report. Ms. Turner may have new information or be able to share with us as an with our whole council. The sample language and these kinds of things. And if there was any budget item that we wanted to consider relating to the amicus brief. We might want to take a look at that, although my feeling on any of those where we might actually have to pay money. Is if we're paying more than one tenth of what Los Gatos pays, I'm wondering why we would think about that. So. I kind of like to do it on a prorata basis relative to our size, if we're committing to participate with other cities.
Mr. Mekachuk.
Yes, I was wondering if Mr. Rudden would have a precedent for what an appeal looks like. That we've been discussing.
For an appeal of the Rena allocation to be submitted to A bag?
Yeah, and I know that we we included the one from Rancho Palos Verdes here, which was the 90 pages. But again, I think only 15 or so pages of that was the answer questions in order, but.
Yes, there there have been attorneys at our firm particularly who have advised jurisdictions with respect to appeals before SCAG and Southern California. There's pro forma requirements. One of the challenging things about this is the statute does require the city to submit. You know, supporting data in accordance with applicable, you know, meeting applicable planning standards justifying its appeal. So it's it's. It cannot be an appeal solely based on legal argument. It does need to be supported by data, which is one of the reasons.
I understand that. I am not, I really don't care about SoCal. I hate to say it.
Yeah.
Concerned about A bag and I'm more concerned about Santa Clara County. So do you have any precedence? Of appeals with A bag and or Santa Clara County?
Santa Clara County specifically, no. But with respect to A bag, the statutory factors for appeals before SCAG are the same as the statutory factors for appeals before A back. So all of the council of governments, whether it's A bag, SCAG, or some other council of governments, they're supposed to follow the same process with respect to these appeals.
Are those appeals public information?
Yes, yes, they are. They should be.
So if 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 there is a link where I could go and see one, and again, when I say I don't really care about SoCal. It's just if I have a choice between reading an appeal from SoCal or from A bag, I'd spend my time on the A bag one.
Yeah, I I can see if I can find some that have been submitted to A bag. The issue with this is just because they are. You know, the appeal deadline has not yet passed. It's coming up, whereas the appeal deadlines for other jurisdictions have already passed, so they're a lot easier to find.
Okay, got it. The smallest jurisdiction would be the most interesting one.
Yeah, if I may jump in. Yeah, I I agree with your summarization of the steps that we need to take, which is basically go ahead and do the field. I'd hope that the consultant can do it for the under the $15,000 so that by the time we have our next meeting. He's already, he can present it to the package of the field itself and we'll allow Mr. Rudin also to review it. So that can be processed. As far as the amicus brief, I, yeah, the budget is going to be a constraint because obviously us doing something. Will not have an effect. And if it's going to, because all they're going to do is say. It's, and I'm afraid the stipulation between HCD and YMB might be that, yeah, you're right. Our allocation was too low, we should double it or something. And they could just do a stipulation and we're out there left and right. And the other question I had on is if the court decides that the HCD numbers are correct. Does that affect our argument that HCD double counted numbers and they're incorrect because now what the court decides might become a res judicata? And we may not be able to challenge that court's finding. If that's the case, then obviously somebody needs to do an amicus and try to have the numbers go the other way. Whether that's available to the amicus or not. It's probably something Mr. Rudin can answer. So us doing the amicus itself, we can discuss it at next meeting, but I don't think. Unless it doesn't cost us anything, we were pursuing that because it'll raise our. Make target on us a little bit bigger. But I think on the appeal process itself with HCD, I suggest if we can move on that as quickly as possible. And if the consultant can say, yeah, they can do it for 15. Then we should move forward and hopefully have them present us the packet by the time the next week.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. I think on the amicus brief, the the choices are going to be between our somehow actively participating in the creation of the brief. Or adding our signature to it as an additional city. Which is something, again, we'll have to read it and see if the benefit of adding our name as an additional city is worth the risk of raising our profile. But that will be a discussion once we have it to read in front of us versus do we have actual input into the content of the brief? And again, we need to see these samples and see whether we've got some creative ideas that they haven't even gotten to. Either because they're not on the edge of the Santa Cruz Mountains or because they don't face some of the issues that our smaller cities are facing. So. I think, again, my my idea was that we we get it onto the calendar whenever we have the chances so that Ms. Turner can share what she's learned. Of the progress on it more widely to us without a Brown Act violation. So that's the key. Otherwise, she can move it up to our council and then council can determine. What to share with with all the council, to our to our city attorney. And then our city attorney can decide what to share with us appropriately prior to any next meetings.
I could agree with that.
I can I can I ask a question of Sergio, please?
Yeah, go ahead, Ms. Turner.
What is, what is the probability that YMB and HCD would settle out of court on a number? That is higher than what we have, but not as high as it could be?
I can't say for sure the probability is zero. But it does seem to me unlikely in light of the fact that it would significantly upend the. Rena process that is already well underway, and I suspect that HCD may want that to move forward timely, even at a lower number. Then just try and get the largest number that it can because ultimately they have a duty to. You know, develop numbers that meet actual needs rather than just. Determine a number that is the greatest they can possibly get away with. And so. In theory, they should have calculated their numbers based on what they thought was reasonable, what the population growth would be, et cetera, et cetera. So I would assume that they have an institutional interest to stick with their number at least somewhat. So. I I suspect that they're not interested in immediately abandoning the number that they have developed.
Okay.
Right, makes sense. So so I guess in looking at, and again, I I. Wish we didn't have to lean on staff to be doing this work, but of course we do. In order to move it quickly and to to work with the suppliers we have and because the city council can't do it directly. And certainly can't do it without lots and lots of meetings. So. With with that, it sounds like if Ms. Hamilton and Mr. Leonardi's are reaching out. The the guidance will be to try to keep it well under $15,000 while getting it an appeal moving forward. Another idea I have here, based on what was just said about trying to bring back to us. The the process nearly done for our approval as quickly as possible as opposed to bringing it back to talk about it more to get started. Would be perhaps we've shown, I think, today that there, each of our council members has different expertise. We don't want to create any kind of serial meetings about this, but certainly I would think, and Mr. Rudden can comment about this if it's not appropriate. That the, if we did retain the consultant to get to work on an actual appeal. That was within Mr. Leonardi's budget, then the consultant, as part of their task, could reach out to each of us. For our expertise and brainstorming on an individual basis about our areas of expertise, wastewater. fire and safety, et cetera, et cetera. And that that wouldn't create any problems as long as we weren't having someone coordinating amongst the council. If we need to come back as a full council and brainstorm and discuss things, obviously, easy to do, 24 hours notice, get it together, get us all together. Does that sound okay, Mr. Rudden?
My my concern is, of course, that, you know, you're working on a work product on behalf of the city and using, you know, potentially the consultant as an intermediary, which could be interpreted as a serial meeting or a hub, actually, it would be a hub and spoke meeting. And so I do have some concerns about that. That being said, I I don't think that the consultant is, you know, prohibited from contacting council members with particular questions about their subject matter expertise that consultant wants to. You know, provided that they're not using that as a method to, you know, for the council to act collectively on the appeal.
Again, I mean, we just, and I'm kind of saying this out loud so that you're giving us as well as city staff guidance to give to the consultant, which is, we're all available to have these meetings on 24 hour notice. We don't want to create any kind of a Brown Act violation, especially with people like YIMBY watching over our shoulder. So better to err on the side of a meeting, even if it's inconvenient for everyone.
So in in that, could we, could the consultant have a draft document? And then we have a meeting and we see the draft and we make our comments on that draft and kind of information only. But but then we would avoid any Brown Act violations. But, you know, and maybe we only have three council members show up, not all five, you know, and we, if we can call a meeting in 24 hours and then it's like a noon meeting or I don't know what, but, you know, just so that we can crank through and get this done quickly, easily and something that's that's very persuasive for our our appeal.
All sounds good. So I guess maybe we've we do, I think we've said the words of staff guidance. We haven't, and I don't think we necessarily need to formally do anything coming out of today because it was to get provide guidance.
Yeah, I I think that the idea here would would be of vote to authorize the filing of an appeal on behalf of the city and then direct staff to procure any necessary technical assistance to get that done. That would that that would be recommended.
Okay. And then to bring, and obviously it would have to come back to us if it turns out that it's an over $15,000 item.
Yes.
And so, but otherwise, it wouldn't have to come back to us except as progress reports or bring full council brainstorming sessions and so forth. Okay. So, Mr. Rudden, you're most up to speed. Having just said that, could you put that in the form of what the resolution would be? While Ms. Rat put prepares to take notes on what that resolution will be.
I I would suggest a council member make a motion to approve the filing of an appeal on behalf of the city of Montessorino to A Bag and authorize the city manager to to submit that on behalf of the city and also direct the city manager to procure any necessary technical assistance for that appeal.
I I think, do we need to limit that $15,000 expenses?
It's it's already limited by the Montessorino municipal code, but you can certainly make that part of the motion.
All right, I'll second that. And I'd like to also add setting an ad hoc committee. So that because that that will take care of the Brown Act problem. My council member Turner has been reactive and council member Mekachak, it seems to be reactive. So I would also add to the motion that we create an ad hoc committee to work with the consultant consisting of council member Turner and council member Mekachak. That we might admit or second to the motion if if council member Mekachak accepts the amendment.
Yeah, now, before we get there, given that I have worked with Ms. Turner prior to this meeting, is that a concern that she and I should continue to be the people? Or are we able to stop at this point with my involvement with her if Mr. Mekachak is interested in working with her, city attorney?
I I think that if you're creating a new ad hoc committee and you would no longer be involved in the item and that would be wholly delegated to the two new members, I think that would be fine.
Mr. Mekachak, are you interested in working with Ms. Turner on that?
Yes, I will work until the 1st of July because I will go into Alaska then.
That sounds fine. Hopefully, we'd be well underway by then. And and then we could deal with your unavailability after that or partial availability. All right. Okay, so I think we heard a motion from Mayor Potem.
Yes. I need a second.
Yes, and I'll I'll go ahead and second that.
Thank you.
Both for, and this is for both, all of the things that were stated, plus the creation of the ad hoc committee and populating the ad hoc committee with Ms. Turner and Mr. Mekachak.
Councilmember Turner.
Oh, yes.
Councilmember Lawler.
Yes.
Councilmember Mekachak.
Hi.
Mayor Potem Delahaye.
Hi.
And Mayor Luthold.
Hi.
Motion passes by zero.
I have a question about the amicus brief. Is Mayor Luthold and I, are we still buddies on that one?
I think we can, we can still buddy on that one. That should be fine. Let's just make sure we keep it separate as an item because that is, as as the counts, as our city attorney pointed out, that is a completely separate layer on this, different from our appeal.
Okay, I'll send you and Sergio the the document.
All right, thank you.
Actually, that document can probably be sent to everybody. We did have the amicus matter on agenda today.
Actually, so so my recommendation is, Ms. Turner, do you have it available? Well, I guess, yeah, it's it's questionable about exactly how it's on for today, whether it was truly on for today. Mr. Rudden, do you think if Ms. Turner can send that out during the meeting right now, we're okay? Or would you prefer that she not do that?
I I think I would prefer that she not do that right this moment. I think it makes more sense to have the city attorney look at that document first and to the extent that it, you know, it is appropriate to distribute to council. I can distribute that as a one way communication to avoid any potential Brown Act issue.
Sounds good. Thank you very much. All right, we don't actually have anything else on the agenda except I guess let's make sure that we know that staff is aware that we are available on 24 hours notice for a special meeting if anything comes up that needs our attention. Otherwise, you can reach out to the ad hoc committee if they need to see about scheduling something that staff is uncomfortable doing yourselves. And I think we have that tentative meeting on, Mr. Leonardi's, if you'll also work with everyone to see whether that's a hold that we can use, hopefully to bring something back in a more near complete form if the ad hoc committee has done its work and Mr. Mekachak is about to leave town at that point, so.
We certainly will. We're also considering scheduling a brief closed session prior to the June 29th meeting, which we already have a Zoom set up for. So hopefully, we'll be able to get everything in place by then for council.
All right, great.
I wanted to thank council, of course, for their efforts on this. I think these couple of extra days we had since our last council meeting really added to this discussion and all the information that was provided in between our last council meeting and now I thought was helped us arrive at a very good path forward. So thank you for everybody's efforts and coming out on the Friday.
Good job, all right. Thank you.
Yeah, and thank you. And again, apologies to staff for increasing the workload. I know this was not on the anticipated workload. And we really appreciate the the work you're doing to to help us on this tight deadline. So thank you all to staff who's here and anyone else who gets roped into helping. So thank you very much, everybody. I will now join the meeting and we will talk soon. Thank you all.
Thank you. Have a good weekend.
Happy Father's Day.
Have a great weekend and happy Father's Day.
Thanks.